So the first item on the agenda is the Listen and Learn Report. So Dr. Swift?
Thank you, Madam President and trustees. We have long looked forward to the Listen and Learn Report. Of course, none of us had a way to know that all of these events would collide on the same evening. So I just want to thank you, trustees, for your patience. I do believe that this is a worthwhile and important report, so I appreciate you moving forward with the agenda. And thank you all who are here with us this evening. As you all recall, we were out in the community through the spring, March, April, and May, and really had about 2,300 individuals personally involved in the endeavor to listen and learn in our public schools and to see where are our strengths and where are opportunities for improvement. So what we'll do this evening, trustees, is to summarize. It has been our intention to get this in front of our community at this final meeting of the summer, but we will continue to unpack this report because there's a lot in it over the coming weeks of fall. And I will just say that it is important to recognize that I had a deep commitment, after three years of deep challenge, for our schools, for educators, for our parents, for our students, had a deep commitment to get out into the community and to see folks face-to-face. So regardless of what our next steps are, this data is very important, I believe, to all of us. And I want to thank every individual who took their time to come to a face-to-face meeting. What a delight to be together again in a public forum. And we were at our libraries, we were at schools, we were in housing development, affordable housing, community centers. We were in so many locations. And everywhere we went, we remarked, all of us, on how wonderful it was to have folks gathering again. Go ahead, Mr. Cluley. And that idea of gathering, why do we come together? Gathering to solve problems that we can't solve on our own. Gather to welcome. We gather to build companies in schools and neighborhoods. It is truly special to live in a community where individuals give their time to come and sit around a table and tell you their own experience and story. And I appreciated hearing the stories this evening, and I appreciated hearing from more than 2,300 individuals in our community last spring. The premise of the Listen and Learn is really clear, and that is that no one knows better the strengths and the opportunities for improvement, the challenges. No one knows that better than those who live and work and bring their children to our Ann Arbor Public Schools. So our premise was to speak to those who know best what we are like, and I very much appreciate the opportunity to do so. There were two questions that we asked, really very similar to what we've asked in the past. The first one is from your experience as a staff member, as a family member, as a student. From your experience, in what areas are we doing well? And we want to strengthen and shore up those areas. Then the second half of the question is, in what areas, from your experience, in what areas do we have opportunities to improve in our schools? These conversations occurred with more than 600 individuals face-to-face in the same location. What a great day. And also from more than 1,700 participants in the online Thought Exchange forum. We will be publishing, trustees, this report along with the Thought Exchange website and many of our artifacts here over the coming days, and I'll include links to those in a message out to our community. We took this framework for our strategic equity plan, and we asked folks, in light of our strengths and our challenges, how does this framework fit? And you can see that there are seven, I call them buckets, seven focus areas of the framework. And we discussed this framework in juxtaposition with the stories and the lived experiences of folks in our community. Just highlights of people, we took special care on this particular set of engagements to ensure that we were at community schools, we were at Saturday language immersion schools, we were in all manner of locations out in the community, not for every meeting expecting folks to find us. Because we know that when we hold an event in a school, or we hold it at a library, or we hold it in the evening, or we hold it in the morning, there are all kinds of reasons why folks may or may not be able to get there. So I want to give a special shout-out to all of the trustee de prime, I'm trying to think of the right word, you always use it, all of those kind of guardians of community groups who gave us entree through saying, yes, I'll host, come on in and do it. You have a better word than that. But we heard from folks that we might not have heard from in past years. They included Octavio, an immigrant from Guatemala, who's one elementary student and one high school student, a mom from Ukraine who has been with us for a few years and has actually been back and forth to Ukraine, trying to see if her area was going to be okay, but then they're back here again this year. Very grateful to our schools for the support that their family has received, and to our amazing Ann Arbor community. Spoke with the mom of a premature newborn, she had come to the meeting from the NICU unit at Mott's, I'm sorry I get emotional, and her feedback was her gratitude that her 10-year-old, who she introduced me to, was being so beautifully cared for by his teacher and his elementary school staff. And she said, I have felt like I could spend my time in the NICU because I knew that my teacher and my school team had my older child cared for. And that, those kinds of stories are really powerful and meaningful. Spoke with several parents of LVGQ+ students and heard a variety of experiences from teachers who had just taken extraordinary steps to support students all the way through the spectrum of experiences where there were hard lessons learned in our organization. We spoke with parents all along the spectrum of students with high performance, who really, their parents would like them to have more challenge, all the way along to students whose parents are really concerned that they have gaps in their learning, and perhaps those gaps are existent now post-COVID and want to make sure that they're addressed. We spoke with parents who came in new to AAPS during this past three years. So this spring engagement was really their first time to sit in a face-to-face meeting and talk about our schools. And we also have parents who've been in our district for a very long time and so know all about our systems and processes. I have asked members of the team who were out on the tour with us through the spring if they will share, trustees, they're going to move very quickly, we can always revisit this presentation, but I wanted you to hear from Ms. Bacalor and Ms. Shore. Thank you.
I am Jenna Bacalor, I'm here with Ms. Nancy Shore, who's our Director of Community, oops, partnerships, strategic partnerships and community engagement. Ta-da, she is. So I'm going to move very quickly and just talk about kind of the framing of this community engagement and how we approached these two different big strategies that we took. So we really had two ways of trying to reach out to the community. One was through a Listen and Learn tool that we have used in years past. That is an online and anonymous tool where people can submit thoughts and then other people can rate those thoughts. People can go back again and again and rate more thoughts as they want to. We also, as Dr. Swift mentioned, conducted Listen and Learn meetings and conversations where we talked directly to people in a variety of settings. So our overall engagement, just wanted to give you a sense of the types of engagements and the audiences that we reached. It was over 2,300 between the Listen and Learn meetings with the public, with focus populations, which I'll talk about in a second, and at district events. We also had, for the first time, Listen and Learn meetings with our strategic partners, and this is really thanks to Nancy, because as we've grown the strategic partner program and made it more of a system and established in the school district, we have really learned that these partners have an incredibly valuable perspective around the strengths and gaps in our school district. We also held some focus groups and we talked to principals and staff. I do want to say, I think that the Listen and Learn numbers are probably an undercount, given the, it was just really hard when lots of people are coming and talking to just do the count. We should have had one of those little clicker things. So I'm going to skip a few of these slides because they will be posted, and also just point out that the summary report of the Thought Exchange is linked on the bottom, it's on all of these slides. And if you go to that summary report, you can receive the in-depth information. You can read every single thought, it's very transparent, there are 950 thoughts, you can read every one of them if you want to. You can also see how many people rated that thought and what the rating was for all of those. Just demographically, as is sometimes the case when you're using an electronic format, we tended to get white parents, a lot of females, and mostly elementary. And that is why we hold this alongside our Listen and Learn conversations with people. So I'm just going to skip the next couple of slides, they're going to be available to you, their thoughts and ratings that come out of that Thought Exchange. And let's get to the Listen and Learn in-person meetings. We have some, a few fun pictures from these meetings. In the big, oh, in the big picture, of course, we're trying to look at, from the Thought Exchange tool and our in-person tool, where are there similarities and where are there differences in these two data sets? So our approach to these conversations, and I just want to shout out Nancy again because she organized and attended and participated in every single one, she was there for all of them. And our approach was really face-to-face, hear directly from people their experiences, and we had lots of people from AAPS who attended the meetings too. There were members of cabinets, cabinet teachers, principals who attended, so that we all really could listen and engage with parents. These were very open and honest conversations. Some of them were challenging conversations, and a lot like some of the public commentary we've heard tonight. They were really just emotional conversations about people's experiences, and of course, it was really important for us, all of us, to hear that. The Listen and Learn conversations that were held, that Nancy organized and held with strategic partners, were with our critical strategic partners who work with our students in a lot of ways, a lot of supportive ways, usually all year round. So Avalon Housing, Community Action Network, Peace Neighborhood, Girls Group, the Student Advocacy Center, these are local nonprofit organizations who have become our strategic partners because they care about AAPS students and they offer lots of services and support. So all told, last year, it was over 1,100 students that this collective group of strategic partners supported. So hearing from them about their perspectives, as sort of that insider-outsider role with the district, was really important. The next slide just gives a little bit more information about the numbers that we saw in these different meetings, and just pointing out again that the typical way to do a Listen and Learn is just to have public meetings, and we tried to really go beyond that and work with our focus populations. We had an event at Peace Neighborhood Center, for example. We worked at a CAN site, Nancy was there, and those Spanish-language conversations and the strategic partner staff. And we also went to different types of district events. The Newcomer Fair, which was a wonderful, very well-attended event, is for students and families who have only been in the country, or the students have only been in a U.S. school for 30 days or less. So really trying to get input from our brand-new families as well. Okay, so I've talked about the approach, we've talked about who we talked to, now what did people say? So the next two slides have a lot of dense words, sorry about that, but just to give you some highlights of how we kind of separated the two sets of comments, we put the public, focus populations, and district event comments. We looked at those, and then we also, on the other hand, looked at the strategic partners. We thought that mixing those two would kind of dilute some of the strength. So a lot of strengths that we heard from the public and focus population side, the quality staff, a lot of big shout-outs for teachers and other staff, resources, some of our teaching and learning programs, a sense of belonging, and student support and well-being. And these are kind of typical things that we hear over time about AAPS. The strengths that the strategic partners talked about were really, kind of a mirror of that, around staff being responsive, engagement, there was a lot of shouting out to Nancy because she's like really leveled up our ability to create systems where strategic partners can, are supported in supporting our students. All right, then we get to the harder part, which is the areas for improvement, and I think a lot of things probably will sound familiar. Some of our teaching and learning, not really possibly hitting everybody as it should, needing more supports for students, that culture and belonging, still needing to work on that, and some communication concerns as well. I do want to make the point that these are examples that were shared at multiple Listen and Learns, this isn't just one or two groups, it was at least six, these concerns were mentioned at least six times out of the 12, yeah. And our strategic partners, again, kind of mirrored that, and they highlighted areas of improvement around racial equity that they're experiencing as they try to support our students. So now I will turn it back over to Dr. Swift to synthesize all of this into some statements.
I just want to publicly thank Ms. Bacalor, Ms. Shore, and many members of the wider team who were out on these meetings in the spring. What we heard, we heard a resonance and appreciation for our shared core values in the Ann Arbor Public Schools, that respect for diversity, that warm welcome and celebration of everyone, no matter who they are. The counter to that, we also heard, as we heard this evening, that some folks don't always feel a part, and that is a part of the reality that, and our challenge that we face. There is a recognition that there are higher levels of challenge and concern that exist across some pretty consistent patterns. Academic achievement, social, emotional, and mental health, well-being, support for specialized learning needs in a number of areas, just that idea of folks feeling that more support is needed, and then more aggressive behaviors. In our opening message, we talked to staff about that increased level of aggression inside our classrooms and beyond our classrooms. And there's not an educator, or a principal, or an OP, or not anyone in our system that has not felt that increase in aggression. We, it's clear from everyone in our community who is in and around our schools that we currently face levels of challenge that have not been previously faced. You know, I have three decades, and I'm sure all of you are younger than I am, I and you, but you still know, we have not seen this level of density of challenge. But they do fall in pretty clear areas of focus, and those areas of focus are represented in the focus areas of our strategic plan. So it is very clear that that next step of setting our goals and our action plans in each area, we didn't wait till fall for that. The staff has already been working with us, we already have really significant work moving on our multi-tiered systems of supports. The team were in sessions today in a number of these areas already doing this work to move forward. What is one of the clear takeaways, pack up and take with you, is that we must, and trustees, I want to be clear, whether it's me or whether it's the next person sitting in my chair, we must increase our system capacity in about six areas in order to meet extremely high levels of challenge. If we're not able to find a way to do that, we are going to lose valued educators because the work is really hard. At the same time, we understand that our parents and our families and our students are feeling those stressors as well. You could hear in the commentary this evening. So we see that it is a time of increased challenge, we're going to have to work together to get plans that meet that level of challenge. A variety of things we heard, go ahead, please, that folks love the approach to diversity and dignity, and you'll see our logo for this year, we really have put well-being alongside dignity and belonging as our focus for the year. When we met with focus groups of staff, well-being was the number-one repeated theme, and it also was repeated among parents, et cetera. Folks feel that we have a strength in our focus on inclusion and belonging, but that we also have greater levels of challenge in these areas, so we're not glossing that over. We're going to have to have higher levels of capacity to meet those challenges. We continue to hear that students and parents and staff choose Ann Arbor Public Schools because of the core values that we believe in and we talk about. Certainly, we have to do the work to live those values. I'm not declining that. I received a beautiful email from a new teacher to the system in the last 72 hours, and she said, I feel like from the first three days, maybe it was last night, first two or three days, I feel like my life, she'd moved from another system, I feel like my life has completely changed for the better, because my values resonate now with the values in the organization that I work for. So again, people resonate with those values, our work is to live the values day by day. We heard about this need for more college application and entrance process support. And trustees, we've already taken some steps across our high schools, the principals are working to make it come to action, but we've already taken some early steps on that to get more help in. One parent said it beautifully, if we could just listen more to the students, they know what they need, they are often looking for small ways to adjust and ease their school day. Our teaching team, our principals have been working, our school teams, for two years now with Cornelius Minor's work, which is about listening to students, and I see them doing a beautiful job with this every day, listening to students and using what we hear to inform our teaching and learning. We have to do the same thing at the organizational level, is listening to our stakeholders and having that inform our plans and next steps. So to wrap up, across the spectrum, and you know, folks can say what they want to about sugar coating and glossing and videos, and I respect that and I receive it. I want you to know, in these conversations last spring, there was no glossing over. Anybody who attended any one of them can tell you, I'm looking at some of you, trustees who dropped in, there was no glossing over, these were real, hard, frank conversations about where we are after three-plus years of the highest level of challenge that public schools have ever faced. And here we are, on this time and this day, turning the page. Across the spectrum of values and concerns, the patterns emerged, and those patterns lined up really well with the areas of our equity plan. So I feel like we thought we might come back with an idea that we needed one less bucket or one different focus area, but so far, it really seems to have lined up with what our community shared. We have to do the work in our next chapter to really see about those first steps, those action steps, in each of the areas. Go ahead, and I've said them, so I won't go back through them again, but really, those top three on almost everyone's list is that academic progress, and whether that looks like concern about early reading instruction, or whether it looks like concern about math at the middle level, it's academic growth, learning and development, well-being and social, emotional, that one was really top in many, many listening sessions, and then safety and security at school. I heard directly from teenagers in our community, our own students, who have worries about their own safety and security. We heard, we hear that almost every day from our staff, and certainly that was heightened by situations of the last 18 months, but it is a real concern that we have. So one major, super overarching theme, go ahead, is this idea, and I remember the night, and I remember the location, Jenna and Nancy, where this really came to fruition in the community conversation, is that part of the impact, a big part of it, is the isolation of the pandemic. And they said, we're not talking about the virtual months. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about when we return from virtual, it feels like we've been missing the richness of those casual connections. And parents pointed to how much in the before times they loved chatting with the teacher at pickup, or dropping by the teacher's room at drop-off, and how even just the beginning of our COVID mitigations, of having some distance, and maybe just waving from across the drive at the teacher as opposed to how it was in the before times. There was this breakthrough in the thinking that these limitations of our casual, everyday contact have really had the effect of a fraying of our relationships. And I believe that, I believe it at the district level, I believe it at the classroom level. Fewer parent-teacher contacts, specifically through incidental contacts, practices shifted, and this idea is that the relationships that were so rich and valued before, there is this gratitude and appreciation to teachers, but maybe not as close of a connection, and part of that due to just the strain and stress of our two years returning. Go ahead. Parents shared that during this past two years, it's been a delight to have almost 100% rest- 100% restoration of all the school activities. One night, there was a big discussion of international night, and you know, all the functions that we do, athletics, et cetera. And they felt like that step feels like remarkable progress, and yet they feel that full re-engagement. And one thing they pointed to is that parent-to-parent knowing each other. They feel like the parents haven't all re-engaged to get to know all of the parents that have entered our system during these past three years. So they pointed to parent-to-parent, parent-to-teacher, parent-to-principal, parent-to-school district connections. They've all been harder and more stressed during this time. Parents feel the stress of educators. Educators sense the stress of parents and students and families. These connections within and across our school community are deeply valued, and there is a deep desire and hunger in our community to reconnect more robustly within our schools and across the district. We have a new book this year. I have mine laying over here, Goldie Muhammad's Unearthing Joy. She said it in a session. I didn't get to be in the session, but I'm going to watch the video. Ms. Bacalor shared this with me. Joy is a feeling of belonging. So really, one of the major patterns has been this feeling of connection and belonging within and across our community, our school communities, a desire to rekindle community. There's a willingness and commitment from our stakeholders to work together to address our challenges. There's also a sincere desire to leave behind the negativity and polarization of our prior three years. And people shared their heartbreak of parent-to-parent friendships that have been sacrificed because of the difference in how we perceived decision-making during those hard years. There's a strong desire to leave that chapter behind, to turn the page and reconnect deeply in our community. An emphasis on the importance of individual, both internal, inside our system, and external, ensuring a sense of community that binds people together and has historically been an important part and an attribute of our Ann Arbor community. I feel like we're facing a couple of fundamental challenges and questions, and I'm so grateful for all 600 folks who spoke in person and the 700 folks who shared their thoughts online. The question is, will we take the opportunity of this moment? Having heard from our community, we surely heard from folks tonight, are we going to take this opportunity to come together and take intentional steps to strengthen the fabric of our community, to increase our capacity and strong action plans around those areas of challenge? Are we going to leverage the strength of our educators, parents, and school community to join together to address this level of challenge that we face? Or are we going to continue to be somewhat distanced and fractured? I think that is the fork in the road that we face in 2023, '24. I know where most all of us fall on that because you're here tonight, you're a part of this session. It means we care about our public schools. We have all the necessary components in Ann Arbor. I've felt that way since I arrived here in 2013, and many of you have far more years born and raised here, many of you. We have the components. We have first-class, top-quality, unlike any other education professionals in our classrooms and in our schools. Absolutely, we do. Absolutely. And they need our support. We have amazing students. We have a community and parents who care about their public schools and will come out on a weeknight and talk to us about that. And I'll tell you, I've lived in communities where that was not the case, and not necessarily because folks didn't want to, but just they didn't have the ability to do that. And so we are so grateful and honored in Ann Arbor. Folks will come and sit around the table and help us work on these challenges. Another area, and Nancy Shore's done a ton of work on it, we have community partnerships and resources that we continue to leverage in this community to face the challenges ahead of us. The future of our Ann Arbor Public Schools, regardless of the other topics, trustees that you may be contemplating or thinking about, it doesn't matter, none of that matters, if we don't come together as a community and rekindle our community in its best sense, mobilizing our collective ability, staff, parents, students, families, higher ed, community partners, mobilize our collective ability to accelerate our work in support of our students, our schools, and the future of our Ann Arbor Public Schools. We face real challenges. Nobody's glossing that over tonight. We have the components we need to sort this out and move forward. So what will we be doing this fall? We'll be out this fall checking in with the community to say, after our community has a chance to visit the website, look at all the data, read all the thoughts if they like, we'll be out to ask folks, "Did we hear you right? Or are there adjustments in what we heard that you would like to share?" We will also ask the question, "In what ways across this community might we gather to rekindle the very best part of our Ann Arbor community and the support for our public schools?" And then, we already have our leaders named on, our team leaders named on each of the focus areas of the strategic plan, but we'll be putting together those work groups from folks who feel they have the time, and certainly not everybody does, but to develop the fundamental goals in each of the areas of our strategic plan. And for those of you, go ahead, Andrew, if you don't remember, these are the areas. The community expressed many strengths and areas for improvement related to each of these seven areas of the focused equity plan. Work groups will be reviewing all of the data from this Listen and Learn endeavor to inform maybe the first, and I remember trustee Kierhaer, I'm trying to think of what committee it was in, but we talked about keeping that number of goals very pointed and not too many goals because we want to show progress. But our team's altogether community will be working on that. And right away this year, we began the year, go ahead and turn over, with this idea of well-being as the foundation. What teachers know in a classroom, what the OP knows at the front desk, what the paraprofessional knows in supporting that student every day, what the bus driver knows, is if we don't start and end with well-being, nothing else much gets done. And we've had a poverty of well-being in this system due to the profound levels of challenge that we have faced. So we are going to do a better job on that, and we're going to ask our team and our community to hold us accountable and do that together. I'm going to give a shout-out to the AADL because they hosted us many, many times, and they always had to flash the lights because we were still talking at closing time, but they were always very kind and supportive of us. There are a few photos here at the end. I apologize, they're taken by the superintendent, so that means they're not very good. Well, one or two of them were taken by others, but anyway. So those are really the high level. Did I miss anything, Jenna or Nancy, that you would add? Trustees, we're happy to receive your questions. Originally, this was a regular meeting study session, and I know our evening has had other things, so we don't have to take much time now, or we can, as you wish. I know you have other obligations as well this evening. Thank you, Madam President.